Okay, so welcome to the fifth board meeting of the ISOC Foundation. We are here in Singapore and we have an agenda full of topics today. So first of all, welcome to the meeting. We didn't get apologies from any of the trustees, so we are all here. Thanks for coming. Any declaration of conflict given the agenda? Anyone wants to recuse him or herself from any topic? Okay, good. So then we can jump directly into point number two on the agenda, which is basically to document the resolutions that they were passed by by e-vote before. Again, I always say that this is not passing the resolutions. The resolutions were already passed in, well, at some point. So this is just to document them. John, you want to comment something super briefly?
These are the, these two resolutions, you've already voted on them and here they are.
Thank you. So with that, Sarah, the floor is yours. Sarah is gonna present the activities on 2019 and then later the plan for 2020. So Kevin, just before we give the floor to Sarah, the logistics for lunch, we can have the 45-minute session now until we break or how?
Yeah, we can go to about 12:15.
Okay. Okay, so we have 45 minutes as planned. Okay, so it's perfect. So Sarah, we have 45 minutes for the, for the update on 2019 activities. Then we will break for lunch over here and then we will be back. If we were not done with this for some reason, we can continue after lunch before going into the 2020 proposal. So that's okay, but just to give you a time envelope where, you know, you can manage.
So I'm here this morning to start in the beginning to talk to you about what it is that we have accomplished since the last time we got together. So that's roughly four months ago. I know we did see one another in September and there was some discussion at the retreat a little bit about the things on which we've been working. But this is the official recap of what the foundation has been able to do since the last board meeting. And so I'm very excited to say overall, we've had a very productive few months and there is a lot to share. So I will go ahead and take us through this. I do want to make note that I did send ahead a summary document in Word or PDF, I guess, in order for you all to see in more detail what it is that I will be presenting today. And then I did post this presentation to Board Effects so that I know you all have had a chance to at least look at it quickly. So let's go ahead and go through it. Next slide, please. So today, as I mentioned, we're going to be talking about the 2019 activities. Then after the break, we'll be talking about where we would like to go in 2020. So our 2020 action plan in parallel with what Andrew presented to you all this morning and where the ISOC world is going. And then we will conclude at the end of our 2020 action plan to discuss next steps. So let's go to the next slide, please. Okay, so the highlights from 2019, I divided them into four different categories. Next slide, please. What we have done since the last board meeting in technology, what we have accomplished in staffing, what we have accomplished in making some adjustments to the Beyond the Net, but also to what we have accomplished in providing grants to those who have applied through the Beyond the Net program. And then, of course, also we have made lots of progress in independent reviewers. And I'll just make a quick note there that we all said from the very beginning how important it was that we had a real independent review panel for everything that we did. That it was extremely important to the credibility and the transparency of the Internet Society Foundation, that we did not look as though we were picking friends or that our committees consisted of us or board members or others from our own community, but in fact that we would pull people from other communities. So we have in fact done that. Not an easy task and I do want to say right now, thank you to all of you who helped me with some ideas for that. Okay. All right, so let's talk about the technology piece. I'm gonna try, take the pictures over here. Okay, because I see Andrew and Gonzalo. All right, so if you'll recall, when we met the first time, yes, it was the first time and I do believe it was my fourth week on the job. So wow, what a great baptism by fire. It was wonderful. We are looking at the, the fact that we had a situation when I first arrived of using MemberNova. And MemberNova was something that I felt I needed to analyze. My first response was really that it just wasn't gonna do the trick for the robust type of work that we needed for the foundation. So when I did the analysis and I talked with folks who've used it and I did go through it quite a bit on my own, as you'll recall, the recommendations for last time was that that was not going to be able to be the system that would really adequately provide what it is that we would need for the foundation moving forward. This was particularly true in light of the fact that we are going to have five programs and not just have one chapter program. So in light of that, shortly after I did that analysis and quite shortly after we met, I went ahead and put together a request for a proposal. I distributed the request for proposal to six different firms. I asked each one of them to not only provide a response in writing, but also to do a demonstration. So I met with all six vendors and I put together a team that I felt was particularly well-versed for this. Lincoln from our IT department, of course, we were using Melissa at the time and Connie Kendig. These people have a really good understanding of what's needed. They've spent time in MemberNova and I felt very confident that they had a really good approach to understanding what it was we would need and how it would work. So we went ahead and talked with Wise Hive, with CyberGrants, and I think I sent all of this to you in a pre-read. I gave you an idea of what it was that we were looking at and how robust really this process was and how really thorough it was. In fact, at some point Hans Peter did join us and I may ask him at some point to, to provide some comments on this piece. We also looked at Tag Works, which works with Mika's, excuse me, Foundation. We looked at Salesforce, we looked at Flux, we looked at Smart Simple. And by looking through all of these and looking at these demos, we took the six, narrowed it down to three. When we narrowed it down to three, we did have Hans Peter join the team. And at that point, we asked them to do demonstrations again. So again, I cannot emphasize enough how thorough this process was for us to be sure that we seriously had exactly what it was that we would need to be successful as a foundation. After the three presentations, we really felt very strongly that Flux was the candidate for us. We will be clear that every single system will have its challenges. There is no doubt that we will have some growing pains, but we all felt very good about what we saw. And the things that were most particularly of interest to us were their ability to have a very friendly user interface. As you all know, some of the biggest problems that we've had over the time has been that people have just felt like they didn't know how to use the system. And we in fact had quite a few comments in my early days where people were really frustrated. And so that to me was one of the most important things that we'd be able to do, that we would be able to really get a system where people could get in there and feel comfortable and take a few exhales as opposed to constantly feeling stressed. So the user interface was extremely important and I know that you'll see that this one is really quite a bit different than what your experience would be having been in MemberNova. In addition to that, we also were looking for their ability to have a multilingual system. We do in fact right now have a interim solution with which we will work with them, but ultimately we will be going into what we see as a really terrific system. It's a brand-new one that one of their clients has asked for and we actually get to be one of the beta testers of this multilingual system. And I think Hans Peter, if you might want to comment, that that was something that was really important and we did not see it necessarily in a lot of the other presentations that we saw. So I don't know, Hans Peter, if at this point you want to comment on that and also the GDPR requirements, the other things that we felt were so important.
Yeah, so just a quick one. It was quite impressive how thorough your preparation was in writing down really each and every process step which could be encountered later on and tested and talked to it and go through it. And Connie is doing a marvelous job in continuing in this and insisting on little details and it really looks good. And I think you or we at the end picked the best of the three, which has some challenges. There are some promises which still have to be delivered, which is a question mark for me and the timing is a question mark. But still, it's the best of the three. And in the end, I'm quite positively convinced that's the right system and really a user-friendly system, which is a main task. User in this case means on one hand, the end user, the applicant, but also the group of people who decide on the programs. They also need an easy access to it and easy handling. And it looks like this all would be accomplished by this system. There's still one large mountain to climb or one big hurdle, which is a connection to MemberNova because we, it's correct, you decided that as much data as possible should be kept only in one place. So having two systems running in full parallel and sync would be a little bit too much. So two systems must be connected somehow. It still needs some work and some details. But I'm looking forward positively and I believe we can accomplish something. Maps a few weeks or months later then booked for, but okay, it will be there.
Thank you, Hans Peter. Yes, so we do have some hurdles to go through. We are in the process of getting a lot of this started. In fact, I've already had our first onboarding meeting and met with them. And now to what Hans Peter just said, Connie Kendig is now a member of the staff of the Internet Society Foundation and as a result is working very closely with our vendor, creating all the things that we need to create. So that is where we are. I'm quite excited that we've been able to pull this together quickly and thoroughly. And I welcome any questions on this or should we go ahead and just keep moving?
Any questions? Yeah, Mika.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you, Mika?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good.
Is Flux an open-source system or is it closed source?
So with Hans Peter, it's open.
Hans Peter is, doesn't seem to be sure.
No, it's, it's based on some open-source software, but it's not a completely open system.
Okay.
Tailored and yeah, no, it's typically a commercial closed software system based on a lot of open-source software.
Right, that's right. Okay, any other questions?
Any, any other questions? No, I see none. So, no, yes, Mike. Again, yeah.
Hi, I just have one question. Hi, I just have one question for Hans Peter. By just, in just to follow up, make sure I understand. So this is open source, this is the OSF license, open-source software license that's used, that's also integrated with a proprietary component. Is that what's, is that what is happening with this particular choice or do you know?
Sorry, I have to pass on this one.
All right.
And really look it up if you, if you.
No, that's all right. I'm mildly curious and I may look it up.
Okay.
Okay, good. Please go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, so that's where we are on securing a new grants management system. And let's go on to talk about what else we've done since we last met in fiscal 19. So we've expanded the team. As you recall, I showed you a desired staffing plan the last time that we were together. And in fact, we are pulling the team together. So I'm really excited to share with you. If you were to go to the tab on our website that says our team, I'm not the only picture there anymore. We have four. So we have me as still executive director. Connie, of course, is going, as I mentioned earlier, has joined us. Her title is Senior Grants Manager. Her job will be to focus on the technology. Everything that it has to do with in terms of migration and integration and other things that have to come about, forms that need to be created. Of course, all of us are providing her with feedback, but she's the one who really understands how best to do it. She will continue to work closely with both Hans Peter and Lincoln. We do have time from Lincoln allocated into the new year and through the new year so that we'll be able to continue to rely upon the ISOC IT team to help us get this off the ground. And in fact, we just had a meeting, I guess it was Friday, with Andre also to discuss the IT needs that would be happening coming forward with ISOC and the Internet Society Foundation. Brittany Povisun has just joined us. She joined last Monday, the 18th, so she starts week two tomorrow. She has been hired to be our program officer for both the chapter programs and also skill programs. And if you'll recall in the pre-reads that I sent you, skill stands for strengthening communities, improving lives and livelihoods. And it's a program that's very much focused on what we will be doing to help people better access the internet. And because that program will not launch until fiscal 20, I will spend a lot more time talking about that program in the next presentation. Ildah, I think most of you already know, she's been with the Internet Society for a long time. She's been focused for quite some time on chapter grants. She's been doing Beyond the Net before it was Beyond the Net and she's very good at her job. And so she's now moved into the foundation as well. So she and Brittany will work very close together to make sure that what we're doing in Beyond the Net is as good as it can be. And there will be issues that we can discuss a little bit as we go forward, not just from this year, but also looking into next year of things that I think are particularly important for us to focus on when it comes to our chapter strengthening. So that's our team. I'm thrilled and we do have two other positions that we are trying to fill. One is a communications manager and the other is a foundation coordinator. So rather than having an EA for the executive director, I thought instead it would be great if we had one person who would be able to support all of our team. So when we look ahead into fiscal 20, I will share with you what the staffing plan for the next year will look like. Next slide, please. So here we are, Beyond the Net. We have continued to award grants very recently. In fact, just a couple of weeks ago, we awarded $300,000 in 13, for 13 medium and large grants. And just as a recollection, we have two programs for Beyond the Net. One is medium and large and those are anywhere from $15,000 to $30,000 apiece. And we also have small grants and those are up to $3,500. The small grants really come from the community grants and most of those grants in fact are very much focused on trainings, on schools, on events, that sort of thing. Whereas the medium and large are really quite a bit different. And again, in a pre-read, I sent you some examples of some of the awards that we have provided. So as you can see in the little graphic there, we have three in Africa, one in the Asia-Pacific, four in Europe, three in Slack and two in North America. And what's important about this is that we are, as you can see with my little sunshine over there on the left-hand side of the screen, we are looking at both new processes and more clear criteria. Rich Fan spent some time with us, as you know, looking at what it was we were funding. And it's important that you, you know, we take a look at where the money is going, how well the programs are doing. So a lot of the things that we'll be doing as we move into this next year and before we launch it again is to be more clear on what it is exactly that we are trying to do with these grants. And I will go into more detail on that also when we talk about our 2020 plan. So another thing I want to mention in this area is communications. So we have been doing regular communications about the foundation since I started, social media, posting stories on the website. Most recently, we're getting a little bit more aggressive with our communications. I'm working with some freelancers to help me. Recently submitted an article, Ogle, you may know this publication in Slack, it's ASIET. They asked for an article that talked about my vision of the foundation and some of the work that we've done, so that will be published this month. In addition to that, we have posted a news story about the vision and the direction of the foundation and highlighted some of the best projects that we've had over the past year. We're using social to drive traffic to that site so that people will read that story and know more about us. And then very exciting, we're putting together a press strategy for the 13 medium and large grants. So we actually have written a press release about all 13. The press release is too long because it has information about all 13. So what we'll do instead is work and break it out into regional versions and then target the regional media to let them know what it is that will be happening as a result of funds from the Internet Society Foundation in their particular regions. So we're getting much more strategic about communications at the Internet Society Foundation. I personally wrote a plan to try to take advantage of different opportunities, UN days, this sort of thing, so that we're not just randomly throwing things up here and there, that we're being much more strategic about it and that we're sure that there is a consistent message across all communications and that we reinforce what it is that we're trying to do and what we have available to the world, not just the chapters now, as you know, as we'll be launching other programs. So I'll pause there for a second. Are there any questions on any of that?
Any questions from anyone? Yes, John.
Are, are the grants listed on the site or will they be or?
You mean the 13, John?
The 13 and the 30, yeah, just so.
Yes, yes.
Wait up to 30, do you find out what, who you're giving money to?
Yeah, no, I actually had some of the countries listed and then Andrew and I were like, too much text. So yes, I will send you all copies of all that so you will know everything about where we're putting our money. Yeah, thank you. Good, good question. And there's some really good, really exciting programs.
Yeah, Ogle, please.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Alga.
Whatever, morning, night. Early, early morning.
Yes, I'm up and, I'm up and ready.
One question about the 30 small grants. As far as I can recall, the chapters have the possibility of requesting that small grants for different activities, training, capacity building. It's only 30 from the 130 chapters all over the world? Or it's the limitation on the amount of grants?
So no, it just was actually about the same that we've gotten in the past in terms of funds, but no, the volume is a little bit smaller now. It's possible that more, let me see, we gotta move this here, yeah. It's just, I think this was part of the problem we had with the system and there were some challenges about getting some of the, the applications in. But yeah, it's a little less than before. Yes, it is. And so we're gonna fix that. And that's gonna be a combination of communications and also making the process easier.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? No, please go ahead.
Okay, so we can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So as I mentioned, in addition to the wonderful progress we've made with technology, we've made with staffing, we've also made with moving forward with Beyond the Net. We've also made some really great progress with getting independent reviewers onboard. So what does that mean? As I mentioned upfront, when we were first talking about the agenda, that we really need to have it be clear that we are a transparent, independent organization. And so as a result, our reviewers and those who pick where the funding goes need to come from somewhere other than our board. So we've put together a selection committee of seven people for the Beyond the Net medium and large, representing different regions. We did not make the final selection for these grants. These were all decided, as I mentioned, by this independent committee. And then the really big change is the independent review panel of 26. So I received names from all of you. We were looking for people who represent all of the different areas that we will be funding, research, innovation, disaster, disaster relief, disaster resilience, which is really more where I'm heading with that one, and then of course, the skill area. This independent review panel of 26 will not be involved in the chapter review. That's a separate committee. So these folks are from all over the world. Again, let me please thank you all for providing me with names. And the idea is that I'm gonna be meeting with all of them. I sent them a document ahead of time to explain what it was we were looking for and to ensure that they felt comfortable with the commitment and how much time it would take and the timing of it, et cetera. And now we're gonna have a conference call. I wasn't, because of all the different time zones, wasn't able to get all 26 on one call. But I actually have all 26 participating, but it's two calls. And it's on December 12th. And on that day, we will go through, I will explain to them where we are in terms of technology, more about the vision and the direction, provide them much more detail about what it is that we're trying to do with the programs and then very specifically what their goal is. Now, we did agree for both of these committees, both the small one and the bigger one, that we would provide a stipend. One thing we have not done is determine the stipend for the independent review panel of 26. It's not like I'm asked, you know, getting questions every day about what that will be, but I did make that commitment. In addition to the stipend, we also, of course, if there is a need for a site visit, we would pick up the costs for them to go and do that. And what do I mean by that? In some cases, some of these requests that come in may be great in the Flux system and may feel really good, but they may require some additional discussion. I will make that call with the review panel to see if we think we need more information to see where it is that they're moving forward. And when I talk about this, I talk right now primarily about the skill grants since those will be the next that we, that we launch. But that's the one, one thing that's a possibility. And then of course, as things become further and further along and we start to see more impact, we're gonna be wanting to engage with these grantees as well. And that's a big thing and we'll talk some more about that when we talk about our 2020 plan. And that is really focusing on impact and the difference.
Sarah, we, we have a question here in the room. Sean.
Okay. Sorry, just looking, hi, just looking at the list real quick. I see that Maya Androukovich Jolkovich is on the list. So since she's on the LLC board and the LLC will get money from the foundation, I just want to make sure that this panel is not, it's not reviewing that request.
So that's something I'm gonna have to work out with you all. There will be certain people who, yes, will have to refrain from looking at certain grants, correct?
Yeah, just from, I just want to avoid a perception of conflict of interest.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Sean. So, so too do I.
Andrew. Yeah, Andrew.
So to be clear, the, the committee here is not empowered to review the grant to the IETF, right? We don't have, like, that's not a discretionary, like, the, the, the foundation doesn't get to say no to the IETF. That's, that's one of the ways that agreement is set up.
That's correct.
In any case, we were discussing, I mean, just for your information, Sarah as well, conflict of interest yesterday. And basically, I mean, we are aware that sometimes now that we have several supporting organizations, we have people performing different roles in different of them. So we're gonna be reaching out to all of them, including you, explaining that each organization will have to develop their own conflict of interest. So we are not intending to basically, you know, have an umbrella thing where we control all these things. So, you know, just, just FYI, we will be reaching out on that. And yeah, it may very well be that this is not a conflict, but anyway, yeah, thanks for bringing it up, Sean.
Well, and thanks, Sean. And the other thing to recall is that the reason that we went for these, this many people, we had talked originally about 20 to 25, maybe go as high as 30, is the idea that not all of them can be involved in all the reviews. So we need a big pool of people from whom we can pull and there will be some who have conflicts of interest and thus may not weigh in on certain grants. But to Andrew's point, yeah, and IETF is not part of that, yes.
Yeah, exactly. The idea is to have a big pool where we can pick as, as needed. Also, if you, if you could comment on what is the status of this? Like, if we are still looking for experts or this is closed? Because during the IETF, several people approached me and actually some of them, I think. Because during the ITF, several people approached me, and actually, some of them, I think, they would be actually, I mean, really good additions to this, but I don't know what is the status at this point.
I would say it's never closed. And here's why: because there will be times when two or three people thought they could do it and will have to pull out because of some other commitment. We need to have a rolling list of people that we can pull in. So if you have additional recommendations, definitely, Gonzalo, send those to me. This is something about which I spoke with Hans Peter, as well as he and I were looking at the list together. We can go as high as we want. I mean, we don't want 50, but we want, I mean, more than 26 is totally fine. And the idea is that we would want to be able to have, you know, on a rolling basis, you know, because some people are going to need to drop off. And we just need to be sure that we have a large enough pool that's diverse enough to be able to look at these different grant possibilities.
Okay, good. Then I'll reach out separately.
Please, yes. And the same to the others, if there are other names.
Yeah.
I know, Pepper, you told me I sometimes don't nudge you enough for names, so I'm nudging.
Good. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, are there any other questions on that?
No, I don't see any further questions.
Okay, so just in summary, during the first five, four months I've been here, five months? I don't know. I've been here four and a half months. I believe very strongly that the foundation is in a very good place. It's moving forward in the right direction. It clearly needs a lot more defined, something about which I'll like to speak in more detail. When we look at 2020, is the way in which we relate to our different audiences, our communities that are outside our chapters, our chapter community, the ISOC community. I want to get into more detail about internal communications and the way in which to discuss the different things that we'll be doing. But we have, in fact, secured a very good system. We have a good team in place. We have our independent review panels, so that we have the transparency that we sought. We have a very good understanding of our vision and our overarching goal, which we'll talk as part of the 2020 plan. And I would say that from the things I'm hearing from people at the meetings I'm attending, we're going in a very good direction. I've spent a lot of time on the road. I'm here today at IGF. For the same reason I went to the ITF a while ago, for the same reason I went to some of Moz Fest, and for the same reason I went to ICANN. Those are to give me an opportunity to interact with the community and to give them an idea of the direction that I believe the foundation should go, and to get feedback from them for things like, what are the gaps? What are the things I need to be aware of? What are the issues? What are you doing? How would you respond to the challenges that I have before me? So I'm getting really good feedback from independent folks whom I did not know a year ago today. And I'm feeling very positive, and I'm happy to take any questions about the direction, and then we'll get into more detail after the break.
Okay, good. Any questions before we break? Wally, I think.
Just a word of encouragement to support your efforts, and this is a very good beginning, from what I can see. And the fact that I also be at the IGF would be an opportunity to catch up later.
Excellent. Thanks, Wally. It's nice to see you, and thank you for all your support.
Okay, good. So I see no other questions, so I guess we can break and resume later? Okay, we're starting. So welcome back. We had the lunch break, and now we are continuing. You know, we already saw what's going on and what happened in 2019 so far. And now, Sarah is going to continue presenting the plan for next year, for 2020. So, Sarah, please, go ahead.
Yes, so again, I'd like to start by thanking everyone for your attention this morning, or now this afternoon. It was great to be able to build on what we talked about this morning with the fiscal '19 activities. And so now we will talk about what we want to do in 2020, which is not that far away anymore. So if we could, please, go to the first slide. Thank you. So what we'll be discussing today about 2020, and again, I know I sent you this ahead of time in a narrative, but also in the deck, we'll talk about our mission and our goal. We have, in fact, very much gone towards shaping that during this year, but we're really going to tighten it up and establish a really good, solid brand for the foundation moving forward. We'll also talk about the team, the things that we plan to do with the team in 19, or excuse me, in 2020. The system, we talked about the grants management system. Where does that go from here? Beyond the Net, as I mentioned this morning, there are some things that we're fixing, and there are other things that we want to do to strengthen the program, and those we'll be working on very hard before the next launch, which is not that far away. We'll also talk about the different program areas. We have five total in the foundation, four in addition to the chapter program. We'll talk about branding and communications and a training strategy. We have done some training over the years, but I feel as though it's really important for us to put together a very direct training strategy that touches on all different types of training, and I will get into that in detail. And finally, we'll end with next steps. Next slide, please. So, the foundation in 2020. We are going to establish and make sure everybody knows that our mission is to fund initiatives that strengthen the internet in function and reach to effectively serve all people worldwide. And that, of course, very much overlaps with what it is that the Internet Society itself has as a mission. Our goal is to positively impact humanity through an open, globally connected, secure, and trustworthy internet for all. As you all know, when you hired me, my background has a lot of humanitarian work in it. It has a lot of foundation work in nonprofits, and certainly, I've spent a lot of time in international development. And I've seen the impact that technology can make on improving the lives of humanity throughout the world. So I'm just going to say one more time, as I know I say every time I talk with you, I am just thrilled to be in this position, and I'm very excited about launching and getting more aggressive about teaching the world what it is that we want to do in terms of a mission and our goal. So the question is, how will we achieve this goal? Let's go to the next slide, please. Well, it begins with people. So as I talked about earlier, we had built the team or expanded the team, but in this year, in 2020, we want to complete the team. This I had sent to you also ahead of time, but I'll just go through it quickly. The Internet Society will continue to provide a lot of support to the foundation. Of course, the Foundation Board of Trustees will play a very large role. Our Strategic Advisory Committee, which was once known as a Program Advisory Committee, has now changed names and has been wonderfully supportive of me from the very beginning. We have meetings once a month, and we've gone through quite a few things together. I'll share one in particular. The Internet Society Chief Executive Officer, Andrew, thank you for your continued support and guidance. And we'll have the Internet Society Functional Support in Finance, Human Resources. We'll have Legal Counsel and IT. And Communications, as I mentioned, will continue, but to a little bit of a lesser degree, as we'll be pulling on some staff, and I have pulled together a team of freelancers who are dedicated just to foundation messaging and communications. We've hired four people, as I mentioned, myself, Brittany, Ilda, and Connie. We are, as I mentioned earlier, advertising now for a foundation coordinator to support the entire team in all kinds of ways, certainly in technology and helping to troubleshoot some of the things that may come out of the grants management system. We're looking for an additional resource in addition to Connie, Brittany, and Ilda to be there for our grantees and for our chapters. We'll also be hiring a communications manager, as I mentioned, and then our M&amp;E manager and a program officer for research and innovation. While they are on the plan right now, it's not something I plan to put a job description up and public for a little bit of time. We have some more direction that we need to handle first. So this is to help us achieve the goal, is to complete the team and get the team working to its top, top abilities. And we're already there, actually, but we can always keep going. As Sandy and I talk about a lot, there's always a little more we could do. And then, in addition to this, we're going to have to, next slide, please, finalize the grants management system. We talked about this a bit during our 2019, gosh, I'm in the wrong decade here, about the things that we've been doing. And we have started the onboarding with Flux, which means we really get into what it is that we need, and they let us know what they need specifically from us. So we are designing and writing forms. We are designing and writing processes. All of this is being developed right now, so that we can get up as quickly as possible. As we mentioned earlier, the Member Nova data migration is going to be taking place. We have support from the IT department in ISOC. This is something that they've already started to talk about, and it's going to begin on a kind of a parallel track. So while we're building all these different processes and doing all these other things, we'll also be beginning the migration of the Member Noted Data. In addition to that, we'll be doing systems integration. Most notably, what's really important is our dispersment system has to work well. So NetSuite is what we use at ISOC, and NetSuite will be what we use for dispersments for the foundation. It is, in fact, what we've been using all this time for the Beyond the Net grants. So it's just a matter now of making it a bit more robust and tied into Flux. A good point that we discovered while we were working with Flux in the beginning was that they already have an ability to migrate or to integrate with NetSuite. So that's good. That should make it go nice and quick. It's not something that's brand new to them. They also have some other integrations that I find very valuable. GuideStar, which is one that helps us to evaluate nonprofits that are based in the US. We'll be developing a system where we can connect with another organization called NGO Source, which helps to determine equivalency. That means, are you equivalent to a 501(c)(3) in another country? So we'll be able to determine that, because, as you know, the grants, other than those that are part of Beyond the Net, are all to be nonprofits for the equivalent, or individuals in some cases. So that's going to be important for us to be able to check that. As I mentioned probably more than once already, and we'll mention more than once again, training. So in this case, it's specifically targeted to teaching people how to use the system, making that interface as manageable as possible and as comfortable as possible. We're talking right now about doing some testing, and I was on the phone with Connie the other day, and we were thinking we should probably bring in a chapter representative or two in these early stages and have them be part of the test. So this way, we can be sure we're getting responses, not just from ourselves, but from others who will be in the system on a regular basis. And then our launch date, as Hans Peter mentioned earlier, this is a lot of work. We wanted, I wanted to launch, you know, December 1st, but it's not going to happen. So originally, they gave us an estimate date of late February, early March. This is very much dependent on how quickly we provide information. I think probably by now, you all know that I tend to be a fairly fast mover, and I'm hoping as a result that we can get this up as early in March as possible. It is, however, possible that it could be delayed as late as late March. So I will keep you posted on how that's going. Again, it just depends on whether or not they run into bumps or there's information that we need to get that's taking time for us to get to them, et cetera. But I feel good that they are aggressive and that they are very clear on my desire to move this forward and to move it forward as quickly as possible. So I've talked about the team, and I've talked about the grants management system, all of these things necessary for us to achieve our goal. I'll stop for a moment and see if there are any questions before I go on to the grant programs.
Any questions so far? No? Yes, Mika.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one question about the goal, because you focus in that goal on the internet technology and not on the internet user. Is that on purpose?
Oh, so it really is all about the user. When we talk about our grant programs, that's an interesting interpretation. I'm going to read back and look at that right now as I'm talking to you. It is really about helping people, and I think that's why I have the word humanity in there. It has to be something to which people can relate and feel comfortable. And that's why I'm focusing on the strengthening communities, improving lives and livelihoods, because it is, in my opinion, Mika, all about the person. But they need the right technology, and they need to understand how to use it. They need to understand how it benefits them. They need to be, hopefully, provided with technology and systems that are in their language, or should they be disabled or accessible to them? So it is all about the people with the fact that the technology has to be right for them underneath. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for asking. Are there any other questions?
Any more comments? No, please, go ahead.
Okay, so next slide, please. Here we go. Time to launch the call. So, Beyond the Net, as I've mentioned, is both a small program, grant program, and it is also a medium and large. We've been doing this for many years. It became Beyond the Net about a couple of years ago in terms of name. We'll keep that name for now, and it became part of the foundation when I started in July. We have, as I mentioned, awarded quite a few grants in 2019, and we plan to award, hopefully, more in 2020. We will continue with the same categories, but we are going to be, as I mentioned earlier, working very hard on getting smarter about how this program can be run. So I'm actually still referring on almost a daily basis to the Bridgespan documents. You all made a very smart call when you hired that firm. I was really impressed when I walked in the door, and I actually have a printed out copy, which I know is not typical, but I thought for referring to it in a presentation, it might be easier and switching screens. They have some really good thoughts in here about the praise for the program and the challenges of the program and the areas for improvement, getting better at ensuring quality control, improving our M&amp;E systems, streamlining the process of grant making, and then strengthening the chapters as we're going through this. Now, obviously, this is something to be done in partnership with ISOC, because Joyce's whole team is with chapters all day long, every day. But we do feel that this is something that is really important for us to participate in and being really hand in hand with this extremely important community to us and making sure that we're being responsive, but also helping them to learn how they can improve the way in which they look at the grants, developing strategies. And very important, if you look down at the lower left-hand corner, is how do we talk about demonstrating impact? This was something Gonzalo and I spoke about just a week or so ago. It's not just that people were trained. It's what did they do as a result of the training? It's not just that they used online content. It's what did they do with it when they used it? And how did it benefit the community? So we need to learn to build that into our systems. And interestingly enough, I was looking at a very teeny tiny Excel sheet on my laptop, maybe this morning, yesterday morning, whatever day it was. And we're starting to ask, answer, or excuse me, add questions to our Flux database, where we're going to start to get at some of this. Questions like, who's your target audience, and what are you expecting them to do? So we'll be broadening the asks for the chapters, so that we know that we can be really making a difference in the value that their funding brings to their communities. And again, Mika, to your point, to the people with whom they're working. Next slide, please. In addition to launching the Beyond the Net Small and the Beyond the Net Medium and Large, we also will be launching Skill. This was at one time known as capacity building. And if you look at all of the different documents for Bridgespan, that's what it's called. I was told very early on in my tenure here that capacity building was not necessarily the most popular word, and, gosh, it's hard to define. You could talk to 10 people and get 10 different explanations. So I decided instead to focus in on places where there is already infrastructure and to find ways to strengthen the communities, improve the lives and livelihoods by building awareness of the internet, building digital literacy skills. But also, digital hygiene is important, which sort of relates to the final bullet in that list. Local languages, there's a lot of content out there that people can't relate to. They can't read, right? So we've got to change that, and who's out there doing that? How can we identify them? Something that's accessible, as I mentioned, not just for disabled, but for other populations, making it more accessible. Maybe in that case, it could be making it more affordable or making it free. And then, making sure that the platform is accessible. And then to my last point, very much an awareness of privacy and security issues. We want you to get smart about how the internet can benefit you. This internet for all, this internet for everyone is out there. But we need you to be aware of all the things that go with that. So our job is to identify organizations that are working in communities that are nonprofits for the equivalent, that are anywhere in the globe, who are doing this type of work. And when we reach out to them and ask them to consider applying for a grant through the Internet Society Foundation, we are asking them to also tell us how they think they can demonstrate impact. Excuse me. That I'm thinking of asking in some cases is for the grant applicant application to include something about research. Can we help fund a pre and post study? Can we help fund some secondary research where you could look at a democratic health survey in your country? Can we help fund so that we together can figure out how we are changing things as a result of this funding? Should we be looking at longer term grants? The things that we're doing with Beyond the Net Small are very short term. Is that okay to continue? Maybe, but maybe we also want to look at making more of the grants more long term. So that's some of the thing that I'm thinking about and I'd like to pause there and get comments on that. And I'd also like to hear your thoughts on the idea of chapter community versus wider communities and chapters versus charitable organizations. And I'm going to grab a sip of water.
Thank you. And anything that goes in the direction of, yeah, demonstrating impact as opposed to demonstrating just activities is just a really good step. So I have here several questions. So Richard and then Waleed.
Yeah, I was just going to reinforce what Carlos said. Like I think that the pivots of focusing more on impact is really key here and I'm glad that you guys are focused in that direction.
Thank you, Richard.
That's very good. Waleed?
Yes, I mean, concerning the question about the chapters and wider community. That's typically the case that chapters had the tradition of being the exclusive club that gets funding. And so it would be a bit of a challenge for them to accept that there will be others in the field. But I think if there would be emphasis on the fact that your allotted amount is not going to be affected by this and that this is additional and it's not in direct competition, it's not the same cake, so to speak. That could alleviate one thing. And another thing is, it's actually much better for them to have partners, to have others in the field that can support the internet work because it still goes back to the Internet Society's name, which you are also, you know, a beneficiary of. So that would be a good strategy to look into this from more of a, let's say, marketing perspective or approaching it pragmatically.
Excellent. Those are really good comments. Thank you, Waleed.
Yeah, Mike and then Olga.
So the, when I was General Counsel of the Wikimedia Foundation, one of the things that we were developing was our relationship with Wikimedia Chapters, which were typically located in different countries around the world. And then sometimes the chapters were clubs, you know, just as they are in some other organizations. And in the sort of the first phase of development, we recognized that, you know, these were the organizations that we knew shared an interest so that when we were giving money, we gave money to chapters and chapter projects. But then it became clear over time that there were other, that we might be actually missing opportunities. The Wikimedia Foundation might be missing opportunities. So we actually developed, some of this is after my time, but we developed a kind of a taxonomy for dealing with other affiliated organizations that might not be geographically located chapters. But, you know, they might be special interest groups or they might be some other kind of organization. So what I was going to recommend to you, and I'm happy to follow up with you on this offline, and that's that you reach out to the community development people at the Wikimedia Foundation and talk about how they have continued to cultivate these affiliated organizations and chapter channels.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I've actually spoken with them a bit, Mike, but I would love to hear more specifically about this issue. Thank you very much. So we'll touch base.
All right.
Excellent.
And as Waleed was saying, I was talking to Sarah and this is basically a communication issue. We need to be able to have a very clear message on why we are doing, what is the goal and everything. So I think, yeah, that's very important. Next was Olga and Mike, your mic remained open. So, yeah.
Thank you, Sarah. Just a little bit of history and experience about the medium and large grants. When they were established, maybe Ila can tell you more details about this. They always need to be challenged through, channeled through the chapters. So what happened at the beginning is that people applied through a previous platform that was called Zoom Grant that was even worse than.
I've heard that.
So they applied that and the chapter was the last one to get to know that someone from the community had applied for that, which, which people applying from the community is good. But the thing is that the chapter then, you know, you have to, you have to manage the funds and the account and all that. Then that changed and now I think there is, I'm not sure, but maybe you want to check that. So anyone from the community can apply and it goes through the chapter, which I think it's okay. And I think that they get to know earlier now and that is better. So all the community is able to apply. You don't necessarily have to be a member of the chapter, but this request go finally through the chapter because then you need some formalities for funding the money and giving the money and checks and all that. So just a little bit of experience, maybe you want to consider that when you develop the program.
Thank you, Will. And you raised an interesting point about the financial side of things, Olga. One of the things that we are working very hard on are establishing bank accounts. When I first arrived, I think, and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, it was close to 50% of the chapters did not have bank accounts and we want to be able to really track the funding better. So we're working really hard at turning that around.
Yeah, this is Andrew. So that is, that is part of the, part of the history. But that's also part of the reason that this bucket of grant. And remember, this was discussed actually when, when the foundation was being set up and those priorities were coming through, that we, we've said, Beyond the Net grants are through chapters and chapters are the way that that's going to happen. And it's always through the chapter and the chapter is involved. You're right, depending on the chapter, people don't have to be a member of the Internet Society or they're a member of the chapter or anything like that. The chapter is effectively how we award those things. And it's worth recalling that, you know, on occasion, we've had little problems with this where it turns out that the person who thought they were getting the grant and the chapter turned out not to agree on stuff and the chapter refused to pass on the money to the grantee and so on. And that, that's, that's part of the deal with all of this. Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't want to tell you how fun that was. So, so that's part of the way that the Beyond the Net grants work. But this skill grant stuff, the capacity building in the, in the previous taxonomy, was not intended to be chapter driven, right? And so these ones could go independently. But I think a critical point that you're making is that what we really don't want is the case where the chapter has to administer things and they don't know anything about it. That, that for us is like, you know, that's toxic and we definitely took that lesson on.
Thank you. Excellent points. Yes.
Thank you, Andrew. Olga, any follow-up or you are done? Okay, thank you. Any other question? Yes, Mika.
Yeah, I have one question about the guidance you could offer to the projects you're funding. Is there any space for that in your program right now? So you're giving money at the moment, but you can also provide guidance and knowledge.
Yeah, so this is where, because the training piece really is important to me. I want to start some really regular communications even before we launch the grant program to start to educate people about what makes a really solid program, what is impact, how to understand who your beneficiaries are. All this kind of stuff that I've been doing my entire career. I'd like to develop a very formal strategy, starting with the chapters as our key audience and ultimately to other grantees so that they're aware of what we mean. We will, of course, build into Flux, they call them tool tips. And these are paragraph dropdowns that provide a lot of information about what it is that we're asking, when we're asking you to complete a field, for example. But that's not really enough. I would rather that not be the first time that you had an encounter with what it was that the Internet Society was looking for. So between good training and good communications, I feel like we can help people understand better what it is we're looking for. And there is an important component to that and that is the capacity of the foundation. We don't want to be in a situation where we get so many unqualified grants. And again, even though our system will help kick out those that don't have bank accounts or are not 501(c)(3)'s, depending on the type of grant, we really need to get smart right from the start about what it is that we are looking for so that we get high-quality applications. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
No more questions, so please, go ahead.
Okay, so we'll go to the next slide, please. Okay, so we have a technology component, a staffing component, a program area component. And then we are going to be supporting other things. Now, we referenced early on, IETF would continue. I do believe at some point, Sean, we will meet. I know, is it Jim Daly, the new Executive Director? He and I have a meeting as soon as I get back. We're going to be talking about.
It's Jay Daly, but yeah.
Jay Daly, sorry. Thanks very much. And we're going to be seeing, you know, what's moving forward with the LLC and IETF. So that, we've talked about it, I haven't spent any time on that. But we are going to be, the foundation, when I say be, funding IGF Global, where I happen to be right now, the IGF National, the IGF Regional, and the Schools of Governance in addition to IETF. Now, these are programs that were formally funded by ISOC. And Andrew and I had a meeting not too terribly long ago about moving the funding for these programs into the foundation. So totally cool. We'll take that. We can do that. But I do need to understand a lot more about what they do. So one of the reasons I'm here, instead of with you guys in Singapore, is to get a feel for what the IGF Global does, what the mission is, how it ties with what we're doing, all that kind of stuff. And the same thing applies to the regional and national and getting a better understanding of that. Our financial commitment to the global, national, regional, as well as the Schools of Governance is rather substantial. And when we get into closed session, we can talk a little bit about how it would impact the foundation's budget as a result. I have put these.
Does that question, Sarah?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, no rush. I was just going to say, kind of in line with what we've discussed on some previous slides, it would be interesting to think about what impact metrics can be brought to bear here. I realize that we're transitioning existing stuff here, but I think in the long run, it would be good to kind of get that framework in place here as well.
Thank you for raising that because I couldn't agree more. And that's why I need to understand, I just need to get smarter about what it is they're doing and how they're using the money we've been giving and, and put them as part of this overall plan for the foundation where impact and measurement is extremely important. So.
Sounds excellent. Yes.
So I have, I'll be interested to learn from all of you what you feel these relationships have, have been in the history of ISOC and now that they're with the foundation, what your thoughts would be. So this is new and it had to be put someplace. So when I looked at the five categories, clearly not chapter. Research, innovation, disaster, still not that defined. We'll get there. So we've put these as part of the budget for the skills. Which makes sense.
Yeah, one, one, one question I had, I was going to bring it up before, but now that you have here all the logos, which is like one of the buckets we have in the foundation is research, basically. And I know this, research, research, yeah. Yeah, no, no, but I, I want to talk about this one. So, and I've noticed that all the time we talk about the IETF and we never mention the IRPF. So I was mentioning that, I was thinking that maybe, you know, we should actually have Sarah to talk to Colin at some point to understand what these guys are doing. And because actually I think it's even more relevant than the IETF. So, so if there's no objections, I will, you know, put, put in contact, you know, Colin. I mean, not, not that Sarah couldn't reach out, but I think it's, I can make the introduction real quick as soon as my, my laptop is erect. So, so Sarah, just, you know, FYI, I will, I will be sending you an email. I mean, also, also about the, before I committed also to provide you with a couple of more names as experts and also with Colin, who is chairing the IRPF so that, you know, you can at least touch base with him and understand, you know, what's going on there in terms of research.
Well, the timing couldn't be better because as we get to the next couple of slides, we're going to talk specifically about our plans for tightening up research. So I think being part of the RTF conversation now is excellent. So I would really welcome that.
Good.
Okay, so any other thoughts on this?
Yes, Glenn, Glenn has a question.
Okay, Glenn?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
In addition to the three schools you have there, there's a number of other ones, including the North American School of Internet Governance.
Yes, I know. I was looking for a few logos and started to make this slide look very crowded. I should have put all of them on there, but yes, I'm aware that there are Schools of Governance everywhere. Yeah, so I should have put North America on there. You would think it would be the first one I'd put on there, but yes, definitely. I meant all of them. I meant all of them.
I'm a little bit biased on that.
Understood.
Friday, Friday, November 29th, the Dynamic Coalition of Schools of Internet Governance will be at IGF. That's Berlin time, 10 o'clock, 10:45 to 12:15. So there will be remote participation. Avery Dory, who is a ICANN board member, is the facilitator for that. So that, if you can, if you are in Berlin, hop into that, but if not, you can do it remotely.
Okay, great. And next time I present this slide, I'll get that other logo.
Yeah, but if you want to have a call with people like Olga and myself and Satish Babu of the Indian School to talk about schools of internet governance, we'd be happy to do that.
You know what? I'd love that. These are all the kinds of things I need to know, who to talk to about. Because this, as I mentioned, was something Andrew and I spoke about just recently and I just started to get to understand what it is that they do and really just started to understand the global. I need to understand the national and regional and I would love to hear more. I know, Olga, for example, you had an extremely successful School of Governance, just head of ICANN. So what made those things successful? Who's going to them? What's coming out of them? What are we doing to follow up with after we've had these school meetings? I'd love to learn more. So I'll set up some time with Olga and Glenn.
So one thing that I should say is that this, the decision to move this over to the foundation, we, we talked in the past about, generally speaking, moving things where it's a straightforward outbound, you know, money process, that, that in general, it would be better to move those into the foundation. And, and this year, because of the reorganization of the staff and the changes to the way the, because historically, these things all lived within global engagement. And because of what we're doing with the global engagement approach inside ISOC and the, you know, inside the ISOC side of staff and what we're trying to do there, that was a real opportunity to sort of say, well, these are, these are very clearly delineated things that we could move immediately into the foundation side. So to be fair to Sarah, I sort of imposed this on her. And, and she's doing a great job in pretending that this was all like part of a cutting plan, but to be honest, this is my fault. And, and the reason for this was really, we saw very clear parallels between the approach that we take with the IETF where this is a thing that we're going to do, but we're going to put it through the foundation because that's the right way to say, we're sending this money out. Where we thought, well, we should do actually some, something similar with other things that are coming along. And it was very clear that these are cases, you know, when the staff are contributing to these things, they're contributing as participants. And it actually confuses things if, if the funding is also coming along with that because it starts to look like pay for play and that kind of thing. We really don't want that, right? So instead, what this does is it moves the, the, the funding line on the other side of the foundation wall. And that, that really is the goal in order to ensure that these things remain legitimate and, and robust and so on. This doesn't mean. This doesn't mean that we're reducing the, the commitment in these areas. But it does mean that I think it helps to have, you know, a sort of professional granting mechanism behind this because then what it allows us to do is sort of put measures in place and say, hey, this is something that's really working. I have to say, you know, to be consistent with the things that we've previously said about the IGF, this is a longstanding problem, right? That we have a number of IGF efforts that are really, really strong. And we, we know that they're making, you know, they're, they're having positive effects. And then there are some other ones that look maybe a little more talk choppy. And, and it would be great if we, you know, actually prepared those things and sort of wrote down, well, this is how we would measure this stuff. And the foundation is a great way to do that. So I'm, I'm really excited about this, but I don't want to, I don't want Sarah to have to take too much heat for this kind of thing when it, it was a sort of tactical decision to move it now as opposed to later.
And we'll make it work, no problem.
So next we have Walid.
Okay.
I, I don't know if my question is basically on communications, which is another subject, but we have had traditionally the logo of Internet Society at all of these events. So in order for those who are at the event to understand who is the particular entity that's behind us, who is supporting it. Should we already begin transitioning, I mean, making sure that the new logo of the foundation is the one presented? What implications can that have in the future?
Well, how interesting you should ask because there's quite a contingent from ISOC at this meeting. We have a booth, we have materials, we have sessions, we have a lot of things. So I think your question is really timely because of course, that's what people will see while they're here. I did provide materials and talking points for the foundation, but that's not the dominant presence at all because it hasn't been. So I think you brought up a really good point, so I need to give that some thought because these meetings happen a lot.
So, so just in, in response to Walid's question and also in response to your answer, so I, 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 my impression, just as a longtime supporter of IGF and sometime attendee of IGF is that I am not saying this is generalizable to all instances in which this question comes up, but honestly, I think the continuity of ISOC support, you know, visuals, visible support for IGF is a really important value in and of itself. So that it, it needs to be shown, I mean, it might not be a problem if there are changes in the logo and so on. But I really think it's important that whatever is done, that it show the continuity of ISOC support for IGF since IGF began. So, so that I think i- it's important to IGF that, that, that IGF be perceived as, as almost institutional. Insta-, you know, an institution in itself that's been supported by other institutions that care about internet values. That's just some sort of my response to, to this part of the discussion.
Excellent.
So I have Andrew and then Olga.
Just to be clear on this particular issue though, right? I mean, like, the IETF doesn't care that the money is strictly speaking flowing through the foundation. That what, what this is, is the Internet Society sort of as a whole is, is working together through this and the path that we have for this kind of funding is via the foundation because that's the mechanism that we have for this. Which ensures that the, the Internet Society Foundation and the Internet Society, the staff operation that is doing these things are, are, are linked more tightly in these cases. You know, and there are other of these programs that are more clearly like totally on the foundation side and, and it's a little bit looser link. And I think the communications around that is going to be important. But I, while I agree with you, for instance, in the case of the IGF, that we want to make sure the, the message is very clear that the Internet Society as a whole is a strong backer and collaborator and so on, which is true. We're sending a big contingent there, there's lots of people going to be there, very senior people, some of the people who are here. You know, that you saw earlier all left because they're on a plane now. And so we have a lot of, we, we have a, a deep commitment to that. But it's also true actually that what we should do is point out to people that as we are evolving, we're growing this foundation stuff and that's a, that's a group of people who need to pay attention to that and, you know, it's an opportunity for them. So I think there's lots of ways, depending on the particular venue, we need to, we need to send that message. And I think that the, the structure and governance of the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation makes it very easy for us to be fluid about those things, depending on what, what the tactic is this day.
Yeah, I, I, I get that and, and, and I think the flexibility is important. I just, and I, and I only want my response to be understood as relating to this particular showing of support.
Okay, thank you. Olga is next.
Well, I think Andrew summarized my, my comments. I think that the, the presence of, of Internet Society as, as the organization itself and the participation of several members of the staff as experts is very important. It's not only that some funding for fellowships or some parts of the, of the budget, but also the presence of many experts, content, information that is provided by the organization. So I think we have to be flexible and think about it each case by case, but it, it also has an impact in the community as a participation because many of these events are very well attended. That's the comment, thank you.
Yes, definitely. Good point. Thank you very much for that feedback.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Please go ahead.
Okay, we can go to the next slide, please. So we've talked a lot about Beyond the Net and we've talked about skills and we've talked about these other programs that we just went over. But there are still three other things that the foundation is responsible for and we're excited about them. Research, innovation, and of course disaster. Disaster may be relief, disaster may be building resilient communities, that's something that we're defining. But I want to speak specifically about research because in fact, we've made some great strides in that. Research is something that we felt would be the next program to launch after skills. And so meeting with the advisory committee not too long ago, we decided that what was really, actually was at the retreat, so it was a little bit ago. We decided the best way to move forward on this was to host a workshop. So I've scheduled a workshop for the 15th and 16th of January. It's going to be in New York City. There'll be a kind of a mixed group of folks. The advisory committee, of course, will be there. We've invited three ISOC staff, David Belsen, Olaf, and also Konstantinos. So they'll be coming, but then most important is that we have external experts. So once again, thank you to everyone for providing me names. Got a lot of great names and reached out, talked to them about what it is that we're looking for. And right now, I'm saying between probably six and 10. Olga, I have a meeting with Jan while I'm here. So we're going to get together, I think, tomorrow, just so you know, thank you for that introduction. And so we're just, some of them need a little bit more understanding of what's involved, but we have people to help us decide really the outcome of the workshop is, is what is it that the Internet Society Foundation wants to fund? Is it academic research? Is it research into how to make the internet more accessible to vulnerable communities? Is it what? So we're going to have a facilitated discussion for a day preceded by an evening dinner the night before during which we'll probably talk about the foundation so that we're sure that we really put it together in context, that it's not just a silo, as you'll see when I talk about branding, all of these programs in my mind overlap and help each other. So our plan is to move ahead and get that defined, and then once that's defined, then start working on building it into our system. And then launching with the definition of what it is specifically that we're asking for. So I'm going to pause for a moment because Olga and John and Pepper and Hans Peter and Richard were all involved in those discussions. I want to see if you guys want to add anything else to that.
So, so Sarah put you guys on the spot, so.
I did put you on the spot. Come on, guys.
The reason, yeah, the reason for the, thank you, Sarah, this has been actually a really great briefing.
Thank you.
The, what we discussed was actually trying to identify what are the gaps in the research, what needs to be done. We don't want to duplicate what's already being done. And so that's what we're trying to do and, and talk to people who are actually already funding research in adjacent areas or, you know, actually in an area, you know, we know that there's a lot more that needs to be done. But we actually haven't identified those gaps because that's where we can bring real value. And so that, that's sort of the background because we were going around and around, you know, from Washington and then on calls, trying to figure out, right, what should the research agenda be? And we didn't have a really good handle on the types of research that was already being done and what's not being done. Is that fair, Sarah?
Yes, that's exactly right because in all the cases, as much as we can, we do want our own niche. We want to be funding where there are gaps. And so we need to determine what that is exactly in research and then define it and define exactly how it is that we want to talk about it. And what we'll expect in terms of impact and measurement in this program as well, so.
Okay, good. Any other comments, Olga?
Yes, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Pepper. I think that the group that we have gathered is, is really impressive. It's, it has a lot of diversity in, in respect of backgrounds and geography. So I think that if we happen to get all together, it will be very productive.
Yes, thank you. I agree, yeah. And people are excited about it. We're lucky, we've got very good response. Couple of people just can't find the time, but that was the only reason that they just had too much else on their plate. So that was encouraging to hear that there are a lot of people who very much believe in seeing us pull this together.
Okay, Hans Peter?
Yeah, looking forward to a great discussion with great people about what we could do with our program. And hoping for ideas we couldn't come up with by simply staring at each other's faces trying to grind out what exactly this program should do. So I'm looking forward to it.
Me too, yes.
Okay, that's, that's a good technique, like staring at each other's faces. Any other comments? Okay, Sarah, please go ahead.
Okay, so the approach that we're taking for research, we actually decided we will also take for innovation. That will not happen in January because we want to get this one figured out. As eager as you know I am to move things fast, I'm also smart about making sure that we have a strategy and that we are exhaling from time to time. But that will be the direction that we do with innovation. And then for disaster relief, I'm doing some of my own research and I'm going to spend some more time possibly working with organizations that are in this space. As I think I've mentioned, I really feel we have a good role to play in building resilient communities. And that's something I've actually had a lot of experience with, working with both the American Red Cross and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Federal Emergency Management Agency in the US. But that's something I will keep you posted on how it is that we're moving forward with the disasters. So that closes up the program area discussion, research, innovation, disaster, skills, and chapters. So those are the five. We're making progress at different scales in each one. But I'm feeling very good about the way they're coming together. So I'd like now to talk about how we will communicate and brand all of this work that we're doing. So next slide, please. And the next slide. Okay, so this Venn diagram I had sent to all of you ahead of time. What's really important to me is that, as I mentioned earlier, that this all be part of one foundation. We are not going to have five silos. So what we do in chapter funding and we do in skills is going to overlap and we are going to learn from one another's programs. There may be at some point where we have a joint grant, I don't know, that could be something that comes. But the idea is that all of these programs work together to do the overarching goal that we talked about from the beginning. And that is to positively impact humanity through an open, globally connected, secure, and trustworthy internet for all. So everything that I look at and that we look at and that our experts look at are going to be looking at this overarching goal. And then making sure that in each one of these cases that we have the measurement that we need to determine whether or not we're making impact. So we'll be communicating that in a number of different ways. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, we've already started to get more aggressive with communications. We're putting out pieces, we're getting more aggressive with social media. We are doing press releases and what I heard Andrew say, I think either today or yesterday, the word earned media made him laugh. But that is in fact, what we will work for is earned media. Our audiences are both the internet community members, which includes, excuse me, the chapters. And then the external, of course, are all of our potential grantees, our partners, et cetera. And we'll be targeting all of these audiences through different channels. The way that I work a communications plan is I develop, develop a landscape, the area in which we're working and what the gaps are, all the things that we've been talking about for this 2020 plan as well as referenced in 2019's plan. We will look at where we are, we will have our objectives of what we're trying to achieve and our goal. And then we'll talk about how do we reach the audiences that we want to reach, what's important to them? And what are the ways through which you can reach them? Is it website? Is it social media? Is it public relations, also known as earned media? How about events? And how about conferences? Do we sponsor conferences? Do we make sure we have a speaking role at a conference? Do we host events like the workshop? Do we do other kinds of things? All of these things will be part of a larger communication strategy. As I mentioned, it will be managed, right now it's being managed by me, it will be managed by a communications manager. But the idea is that we'll have a good, solid strategy and I sent you all a timeline as one of my attachments, which I did not bother to put on a slide, it was too long. But we will have a, a very clear timing on how we want to communicate what to whom through which channel. So when we're going to be launching grants, who do we need to let know, what are the key messages that we want to send, et cetera. So communications to me is not just important because I happen to have spent a lot of my career doing it. But what's important is we need to establish our brand, we need to let people know what we're doing. Excuse me, and really importantly, we want people to see what we're doing so people will model behavior. They'll see these great programs that are making great differences in the lives of people around the globe and be motivated to, to partake and perhaps expand. I mean, that's what we're all about. We're part of one big community for the internet for everyone. So any questions on communications? Excuse me.
Any questions? My, Glenn, is that a question or, yeah, Glenn?
Can you elaborate on what conferences you're looking at? I guess there's a few. Historically, the N10, NTC 21 is going to be in Baltimore. But I, I think you probably want to rethink that because N10 launched the petition against the PIR transaction, so.
Okay.
Largest, largest group that represents the million non-for-profits in the States to do an annual technology conference. But I think you should consider the IEEE Global Humanitarian Technology Conference. It goes between San Jose and Seattle each year. But what I, what I like, and I think it gets back to what, what we heard this morning in the plan was, I believe, slide 21. Andrew mentioned sowing the seeds for self-sustaining communities. So I guess it gets back to the, the, why I'm mentioning IEEE is they have a significant fund for humanitarian activities. So there's matching funding. So I'm, I'm kind of keen on seeing long-term plans for grant applications so that people, actually it's just not a one-hit wonder that they actually have a plan and a sustainable plan. And not all their money comes from ISOC, it comes from a variety of different sources. So there, there's some really good contacts I have with IEEE that could be helpful there.
So Glenn, you've raised some really interesting points there. First, I just want to capture that word sustainability. I believe that have not emphasized it to the degree that I'd like, and that is that we are looking for programs that do have a very good understanding of the environment in which they're working and sensitivities of the culture and the government. So that we can be sure that part of the program, as they plan it out and look at their strategy, is the idea of how to make it sustainable. So that's something I want to reference right there in response to hearing that word. In terms of which conferences to go to, certainly I look to you all to help me. I've been, you know, obviously going, as I mentioned earlier, to conferences that people felt were really important for me to learn from as much as anything. But we need conferences where we can also spread the word. So the right type of conferences for that, there may be something that's specifically good for researchers that I should be part of, or entrepreneurs, or for innovation, or, you know, these kinds of things, and certainly the IEEE. And certainly the IEEE. I know that there's that petition out there, I know that we have to take a look at some of the feedback from the PIR sale, et cetera, with our choices. But obviously, there are a lot of other factors that will figure into which conferences we want to go to and what role we'll want to try to play in each of those. So I welcome suggestions from anyone and everyone on which ones would be good for me to attend. And then I can give some thought to what type of presence would make sense in terms of the Internet Society Foundation. And certainly finding out what the Internet Society is doing in some of these conferences would be extremely important as well, so that we can be sure we're integrated.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other questions? I see none. Okay, good, go ahead.
Okay, let's go to the next slide, please. Okay, so I've mentioned this a couple of times. I mentioned it when we talked about 2019, and I'm mentioning it again as we talk about 2020. We have got to get better at training. We have an obligation, I believe, to our future grantees and to our chapters, to teach them more. I think I answered this a bit to the question that Mika posed earlier. But the idea for me is to not just focus on applying for grants and how to make your grant applications stronger and all of that. While that's really important, I want to do that. I also want people to start thinking more about strategies. And this is where the sustainability piece comes in. You know, what is the strategy behind the program that you're asking for funding for? How does it fit into the bigger picture? Where is it going? You know, is it a one-time thing, or is it a longer-term thing? And then let's move on to the next one. Can you measure the impact? And in many cases, people don't know what we mean when we say that. But, you know, we say we need you to measure impact, they don't know necessarily what that means. I've read through a number of the Novo Nova applications. Some are fantastic and some, it's clear that they need guidance on how to answer that question. What is the outcome of your project? What impact do you expect? You know, sometimes people will say that we'll get 20 people out of training. I want them to be thinking deeper than that, you know. So I want to develop a strategy where we can help work, starting again with the chapter community and then working our way into the bigger community. And then I also want to start getting some communication ambassadors out in the field. While we're smart and we have a good amount of people from a freelance world. Excuse me, and we're going to have people working for the foundation, either at ISOC or at the foundation, who are going to help us find stories. People who are working on the ground, they're really good story finders. But they need to understand what I mean when I say I'm looking for a story. So that, to me, is another piece of the training. And I apologize, my throat's dry, so let me get another sip of water of their questions.
Any question? No, 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 I don't see any questions.
Okay.
People seem happy.
Well, I'm happy about this. I'm really excited about this. So, okay, let's go to the next slide.
Yeah, please continue.
Next.
Okay, next steps.
Okay, it must be the early morning. I really apologize. Normally, I can get a hold of this with water, but. So I'm going to, we are going to, as a wonderful team, continue to move forward on the Grants Management System implementation. We will continue to build the team, as I talked about, until it's complete. Implementing the comms plan, as I referenced earlier, and then, of course, planning and hosting trainings. I mentioned earlier that I'm going to be hosting a review panel call, that's on 12th December. I have two different calls, so we'll cover all 26 people. We're going to be hosting a workshop for the research definition, as we talked about before. Really working hard in an internal communications plan to educate and engage the internet community in what we're doing. And then, of course, determine timing for the skill program launch. So those are the steps that I see as the most immediate. Obviously, if you were to look at the plan that I sent you with the calendar from now and through next December, there's a lot more on my list of things to think about, but I wanted to share with you the things that I felt were the most immediate, in my mind, to start. Well, I'm working on a lot of these already, but to really get aggressive with all of them in 2020. So with that, I have provided this wonderful group and very patient and lovely audience a view as to what I want to do for the foundation in 2020. Again, I want to say I'm thrilled to be in this position, to have the opportunity to do this, and I welcome any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Wally?
Well, all of this is music to our ears, I can imagine, and looking forward to the next steps. You do mention among the external audiences, partner organizations. Do you already have a database? Have you already established some concrete lists and maybe motivations, why they could be partners, or is that in the process?
No, it's in the process, but I will tell you, to me, this is the type of work that really works well with partners. We have partners, of course, at ISOC, so getting smarter about who it is that we're working with closely, our partner organizations, for one thing, organizational members. But also, just, I know you can further your reach if you combine your efforts with someone else in your community. So I'm going to start working, actually, with my program officer for skills and for chapter, to develop a list of potential partners. As you know, it's not just in the short term with what we want to do to bring the foundation to life. But it's also, we have a plan down the road to fundraise and to expand our reach and expand our funding sources. And so getting to know partnerships from that standpoint is also something, it's a bit more long-term, but it's also on my mind.
Hiroshi.
One of the things I want to share with you regarding the kind of evaluation, especially about the research and innovations. We frequently having such opportunities. Then, most of the evaluation came from the kind of average score by the reviewers, which sometimes boring.
Okay.
Then, one of the interesting, you know, projects we are running about five years in Japan was some, you know, people who love the idea. Most of the people doesn't show the interest. Though, we, you know, pick those projects, then he somehow, you know, interacted with them to start supporting them, not full-time, but kind of, you know, sometimes. Then, that's going to be, of course, that's the successful rate is not large, but very interesting result going to come out. So that kind of information, I'm happy to provide you.
Yes.
Especially in the case of research, because the established, you know, people, researcher loved the very, say, established direction. So especially younger people have very unique idea that would not have the low possibility to succeed. Though some people loved the idea, then encourage them would be very, you know, interesting. And I think they are aligned with the internet discipline, our mission.
So Hiroshi, you are saying that we need passionate champions, right? Or, yeah?
Yes, great idea.
Oh, some, oh, okay, okay.
The, you may think about, you know, when you establish such a reviewing structures, then, you know, such a, you know, possibility would be, you know, considered by you. I mean, I provide that information.
Perfect. Thank you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Any more questions, Sarah? Yeah, Hans Peter.
It's not a question. I'm very pleased and very happy to be able to work with you over the last five months and learning, or learning to know somebody who is so passionate and is working so hard to drive us forward. So I'm really happy where we are, and I think the plan for 2020 promises that we continue at same speed and same direction, and that's really great. And I'm sorry if I press you sometimes, asking you for spending more money or sending out more money, not earning, but really sending out. It's correct. We do, we have to do it the right way. And that's sometimes even more important than do it the fast way. So, yes, keep on going and I will support you continuing to do this.
Thank you. It's a pleasure working with you too, Hans Peter. Thank you.
Thank you, Hans Peter, yeah. And yeah, I can agree that, yeah, we should only do it the right way. I mean, like, especially when we are giving away money. And, but I think, I mean, this is according to the original plan, that we would be ramping up, not going crazy to give too much money, because we are, as Wally was saying before, learning as we go. So I think this is, this is great, actually. I think Mike wants to talk? Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, this is, I just want to say, this has all been really great. And one of the things I meant to say earlier with regard to IGF in particular, was that I have, I have many thoughts about how to have the optimal experience of IGF.
Okay.
I just wanted to, rather than try to share them all here with you, I just want to make myself available. If we want to take that conversation offline and one of your moments of downtime, I'm happy to correspond with you or do a separate call with you. But it's a very positive experience.
I've heard that.
And very useful for your work in particular, I anticipate. So if there's some way I can help on that, let me know.
Yeah, maybe shoot me an email with your time zone schedule, and then we can set something up. Like, I don't know if you're staying in Singapore.
So I'm in Singapore until late, until, not too late, but until tomorrow evening.
Okay.
Anytime over the next 24 or 30 hours, we might be able to set something up.
Okay, excellent. I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Olga?
Thank you. I remember that I contributed with the video that we, I still prepared about how to participate in the IGF. So I would try to find and send it to you. We did it like five years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. So before Hans Peter hurts himself, he was doing something weird here. I think we don't have any other questions. So we're going to move now into the open session, so that Sandy and Sarah, they present the budget, and then we will. Yeah, what I meant is like, we're going to go into executive session. It's good that you guys are paying attention. So we're going to be moving into executive session. Sarah and Sandy will be presenting the budget, and then we will go back into the open to observer session, just to approve it as usual. So these presentations should be around 20 minutes. So welcome, we had the executive session where we discussed the budget. And now we are again in the open session, open to observer session, to be more precise, to approve it. So we have the resolution there on the agenda. It's 0.6 on the agenda. So before we go into the resolution, any comments, any questions? Anyone wanted to explain how you guys are going to vote?
So I would like to declare that I have a conflict and will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Because on the LLC treasure, making your request for the LLC.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Sean. That's useful to capture, so the secretary will capture that. Okay, I see no more questions, so I need someone to move. So Hans Peter moves, Hiroshi seconds. And again, you know, we're going to do roll call, so you have to mention your name and then your vote, which could be yes, no, abstain. And we started with Mike in this direction. So Mike, please go ahead. With Mike, with the mic on.
You mean you can't hear me? All right. And now I am sure that's correct. I'm Mike Todd when I vote yes.
Glenn McKnight, yes.
Pepper, yes.
Olga, yes.
Sean Turner abstained for the reasons mentioned earlier.
Richard Barnes, yes.
Gonzalo, yes.
John, yes.
Hans Peter, yes.
Hiroshi, yes.
Wally, yes.
Mika, yes.
Okay, so the resolution passes with one vote in favor and one abstention. Okay, good. 11 votes in favor. No, well, what I wanted to say is 11 votes in favor and one abstention. I don't know what I said, but what I wanted to say is, okay, 11 votes in favor, one abstention. Exactly, all set. Okay, good. So, so. Yeah, exactly. So there were two ones there for 11. So this reaches, I mean, this takes us to the end of the official agenda.
Two more resolutions to pass.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, they were on the next page soon. Yeah, true. Yeah, I used to have the computer, I was scrolling down, this is like a physical agenda, so I hadn't seen it. Okay, so the second resolution we have here is to approve the board-designated funds for chapter capacity and skill programs. So any questions on that? Okay, so I need someone to move. Mika moves, Wally seconds. And again, we will do the roll call, you know, you know the drill, so we start with Mike.
I'm Mike, I vote yes.
Glenn votes yes.
Pepper votes yes.
Olga, yes.
Sean votes yes. Richard votes yes.
Gonzalo, yes.
John, yes.
Hans Peter, yes.
Hiroshi, yes.
Wally, yes.
Mika, yes.
So the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. And, yeah, I was thinking that. Okay, so Sean, with what you said, I think you intended to abstain in the next resolution, which is the one about IETF LLC specifically. But well, I mean, on the action plan and operational budget. Well, it includes that, so yeah, I think it makes sense that, yeah, you abstain in both, so, yeah. Okay, no, I was just making sure that we were consistent. Okay, good. So the resolution passes unanimously, and then moving on to the next resolution, which is to approve the contribution to the IETF LLC, which is what Sean mentioned before. He's the treasurer of the LLC operational budget. Any questions on that resolution? So then I need someone to, yes, Richard.
One question, just to confirm my understanding. It looks like in the second, whereas, we have the Internet Society shall contribute. And third, whereas, we have the Internet Society Foundation will contribute. Should those be the same?
Yeah, it should be. It should be Internet Society Foundation.
Foundation in both cases.
Wait, wait, Internet Society, I'm sorry, let me just read it. The first one is the Internet Society IETF are parties to the.
Sorry, no.
Yeah. Yeah, the second one, the second, the first whereas, the whereas the Internet Society Foundation. Yeah, should change that.
Well, the first one is correct. The Internet Society and IETF LLC are parties to the LLC agreement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you saying that the second one, that you should say?
Sorry, it's late here.
I think they're all right, because we get, the IETF gets money from both sides.
No, the middle one, the where it says, whereas the Internet Society shall contribute 5 million, that should be the Internet Society Foundation shall contribute 5 million.
No, so Andrew's point is like, we are capturing here that ISO as a whole is providing the money. And the second whereas means that is actually the foundation on behalf of ISO providing the money.
Fair enough.
So please read with this in mind the resolution and think if it makes sense.
So let me, let me, let me try that again, because that wasn't quite it. The first whereas says, here's the, here's the, here's the deal. The second whereas says, the Internet Society shall do this. And the third whereas says, it's the Internet Society Foundation that's doing it on behalf of the Internet Society. So this is written correctly.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me restate that, make sure I understand. So the first two are saying that the Internet Society is doing this, and the third is saying that the foundation is how they're doing it.
Yeah, the last one is how, yeah.
So let me just ask a clarification too, which is that my read on this, and I think, I think we're zeroing in on what the real read is, is that we are, the third whereas is the one in which we, as the ISOC board, are directing or stating that the Internet Society Foundation is doing this? Or is that, or is that not right?
That's not right. The third of these is where you are saying is the Internet Society Foundation that you're taking the responsibility to do this, so that the Internet Society's job has been done. Just a separate, strictly speaking, a separate thing. You're not acting as the Internet Society Foundation Board right now, you're acting as the Internet Society Foundation Board right now. And what you're saying is, we're doing this thing.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, yeah. So, so that may not have come out quite as clearly as you think it did.
Yeah, he wanted, he wanted to say, here we are not the ISOC board. Here we are the ISOC Foundation.
All right, that's what I needed to hear was just to understand which board we are sitting at for the purpose of approving this resolution. So thank you.
And yeah, exactly. And here, I mean, in the results part of the resolution is clear that we are talking about the foundation. So please, everybody with this in mind, read the resolution. I see people are happy with that. So at this point, I need someone to move. Okay, Olga moves, Glenn seconds, and again, the same drill. So starting with Mike.
I'm Mike. I vote yes.
Glenn, I vote yes.
Pepper, yes.
Olga, yes.
Sean Turner abstain.
Richard Barnes, yes.
Gonzalo, yes.
John, yes.
Hans Peter, yes.
Hiroshi, yes.
Wally, yes.
Mika, yes.
So the resolution passes with 11 votes for and one abstention. Good, thank you. So let me see if I have more pages. No, this was the last page on my paper agenda. And now I'm pretty sure that we are reaching the end of our agenda, official agenda. So any other business? Okay, see none. I move to adjourn. Thank you. The meeting is closed.